All right, we're starting our board meeting, our open session. We're actually gonna make a slight change to the agenda order and we'll get back to our approval of minutes and our consent agenda and go to our auditor's presentation.
All right, well, thank you for having me. I first like to thank Anthony and the entire team for having this successful first audit year. Without your help, this is impossible, so thank you. Next thing, go through the annual financial report with you. And as I say, the page numbers, it's gonna be the actual page number. So if you're filing on PDF, it's gonna be at the bottom of the page. And we'll start off with page 12. Page 12 is a certificate of excellence award that was provided for the 2022 audit year. We have applied for and expect to receive the same award for 2023, so congratulations on receiving that award. If you skip about two more pages, you'll run into our Lauderbach and Amon letterhead. This is our independent audit report in which we provide a clean, unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can receive. Basically states that we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they are presented. The next section is the management discussion and analysis. It starts on page 19. And the management discussion and analysis really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year or what the numbers truly mean, this is where you wanna go to find those answers. Next, gonna have you skip ahead to what would be your income statement, which is on page 34. Towards the bottom of page 34, you'll notice that the general fund had a net decrease of $122,000. The general fund is your main operating fund and is made up of your education, tort, and working cash funds. Although there was a deficit in the current year, the revenues were actually higher than anticipated and your expenditures were below budget in the current year. So your general fund combined had an ending fund balance of $10.6 million. Although in combined it was 10.6, we did note that the tort fund had a deficit fund balance individually, so we did provide a comment to look into for next year. The next section is the notes to the financial statement, which begin on page 36. The notes really provide further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're gonna find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. I'm not gonna go through the notes with you tonight, so I'll have you skip ahead all the way to page 87. Page 87 is the start of your budgetary information, so if you wanna see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you wanna see, go to, to see those comparisons. You may note that there are four funds that did have expenses over budget in the current year, in which we also provide a comment to look into for next year as well. Does anyone have any questions? If not, appreciate your time and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good news, huh?
Yay.
And with the transition with the new audit firm, they've been, Lauderbach have been incredible, great to work with. I know, you know, the transition, you know, took a little longer because of the new year and the response time and the fact that we went out to bid late. But overall, they were pleasant to work with, you know, gather the reports quickly, so going forward should be a lot quicker.
So those comments, I could've just asked him, but I'm gonna ask you, Anthony, like, are those, it's like over budget, like, what does that mean? Those four funds that he was talking about and like the tort fund thing?
So the, so what we categorize as our operating funds, he didn't mention, you know, O and M. So over the course of ad fund, O and M, transportation, I'm R F and tort, those, you know, the revenue, you know, the expenditures exceeded the revenue, so that's why there's the deficit. The tort fund, when he was explaining that, the fund balance, the ending fund balance was negative and that's, over the course of years, insurance claims, which that governs that fund, increase. So to reallocate the funds to make sure that's not a negative fund balance is to readjust the levy collection. So you would just, whatever is the ending fund balance is negative, I would reallocate some of the levy to offset that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? So we'll return back to our approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 27, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the February 27, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no public comment at this time, so we will proceed with the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to consent, to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations, Lisa Ryan, nurse assistant, Shannon Simpson, long-term sub elementary art teacher, resignations, retirements. Two, approval of the ombudsman contract. Three, approval of the March 2024 expenditure report. Four, ratification of the February 2024 regular payroll. And five, approval of IHSA membership.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Motion carries. So proceeding back to information and discussion, we'll go to number two, the RFQ for architect.
So we currently have an RFQ for an architect posted in the local paper and the Chicago Herald. It was posted March 4th. April 2nd qualifications are due at the district office by 10:00 AM. Screening of the qualifiers would happen the next day on the 3rd and board approval on April 9th. So this would approve a new architect for the district going forward with large projects upcoming and then also just going forward with a new architect firm. I did receive a lot of emails from architect firms, so we are gonna get a strong pool of firms submitting bids, so that's a good thing. And we do not have to select the lowest responsible bidder. It's based on other qualification references, interviews because of the screening process, how they answer with, you know, referendum issues, big projects, so all play a role with this RFQ.
Why is the architect, and I assume you mean the construction manager also, why are these two not a requirement for us to go with the lowest bidder?
Because this, these two are qualification specific. You know, they have different set fees and rates based on projects, but this categorizes in school code a qualification where it's not a bid for price.
Okay, thank you.
Side question, just from my knowledge, do you only put it in the paper or is there something else that, like, you put it online or anything, just with technology?
So, great question. So we have to post it in the local paper. The code, the school code is really outdated, to be honest, so it doesn't specify electronic or online. But when we posted in the Chicago Herald and local paper, they also posted electronically to their bid network. You know, for example, we've had a firm outside of Illinois because they looked at it, so it is posted. The district doesn't manually post it, the newspaper does it for us.
Okay, 'cause we're not the only government organization that's required
Right.
to do requests for bid posted publicly.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. That's a great question, but the people who are interested in bidding know where to look to find this.
Right.
They're keeping their eyes peeled because this is how they would garner more business.
Yeah.
So they, yeah, they go through, you know, the postings and local government section of bids in the paper and the website, so they see our posting of looking for an architect, looking for a construction manager. And then they would also reach out if they have any questions. Can you provide me the bid specs? Because when we post on the, in the paper and they post electronically, the full bid document isn't attached. It's just a memo saying we're going out for bid. So that's when districts reach out to me and say, you know, I've looked at your board meetings, you know, could you provide me more specific questions on what you're looking for?
Do you have a spec page then that you reach out to them with?
Yeah, so I created a spec page or spec document, bid specs. So when I, it's posted, it has to be posted on our website. So when they ask for it, I provide the PDF that I created.
Okay, thank you.
And can you give an example of, like, some of the things that we ask of architects to, like, show? And my question is, does it include things like what projects have done before or similar districts kind of thing? Do you get that kind of thing?
So in the bid specifications, I asked for examples of a facility plan. So have they created a master facility plan? Could you provide us any referendum projects, if any? Could you provide us the size of districts, how long have you been working for? So there's a list of documents or questions that they need to specifically require to provide during those bid document specification interviews. So it's a long range of questions, but it breaks down on work and quality. What have you provided? Can you give me examples? And then also, you know, district-wise, how, who did you contact? Who did you work with? Any strengths, any weaknesses, and all of that.
Any other questions regarding the architect? I guess a similar type of thing will, RFQ for a construction manager.
So, yeah, so this is a little bit different than the architect, but still same process in regards to posting in the paper, when they post it online, creating a bid spec. It's, the bid specs are different between a construction manager and architect because you're looking for two different things. For this timeline, I extended to the board approval April 23rd just because of the timing and, you know, the more detailed oriented interviews when it comes up. So with a construction manager, this is specifically for the larger construction work that the district's gonna see down the road. This doesn't, this doesn't relate to any other small construction work. This is in relation to the next couple of years of what the district is, you know, gonna project to see on big facility projects only.
And I think you're getting to the beginning of something I learned, 'cause I think the very first time I heard of this, I asked, why do we need, oh, why this one need this? Like, we didn't need this for our project at the junior high, correct?
We did, we did not.
And so can you speak to, like, why we need this now?
It's just a, it's a, it's a larger scope of projects, one. Two, a construction manager really dives into the cost, labor, all of that, where the architect just doesn't. He just does the scope of the architecture. In relation to the HVAC project at the junior high compared to, you know, larger projects we have in the horizon, the difference is the communication and the middleman between the architect, the labor, and other third-party construction workers. This construction manager would report to the board on progress relating to the work. So they would be the front person on any communication regarding the projects.
So this is larger than...
This is larger...
After all the work we have you do, you could not be this person.
I cannot, yes. I cannot, Mr. Baldorman cannot, our director of buildings and grounds cannot. This is, this is what other districts do and require for projects such as a referendum and larger scope projects.
And it is just good business practice to have this instead of putting it on yours, yours or Joe's plate, correct?
Correct.
We don't have that kind of expertise.
That's what I was gonna say, like, love you guys, but no offense, like, would rather have an expert do it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, yeah, we're not, we're not gonna know the labor cost, we're not gonna know what it costs to, you know, create this side of the building or tear down, you know, this aspect, where the construction manager will and present that to the community and the Board of Education. What I've seen recently and even today was there are construction managers that also have architects in-house.
I was gonna ask that question.
So that is something for myself and the board to consider down the road when we gather up the bids and potentially selecting an architect and a construction manager under one firm.
Are they due at the same time? Remind me.
No.
The architect and the construction manager are not due at the same time?
April 9th is the architect board approval and April 23rd is the construction manager. But there are firms that will submit both RFQs and it's the same company.
Can I ask just a logistical question? The interviews conducted, if necessary, by whom?
Myself and Joe Smith.
Oh, God, okay.
What would you consider a satisfactory amount of candidates to successfully hire?
For construction managers? For me specifically is large referendum projects. How do they handle it?
Like, how many?
How many?
How many people?
'Cause it sounds like for the architects, we have a wide variety. Will we see that also with a construction manager?
We will probably see half. I know there was over 15 architects that submitted or asked for qualifications. Construction managers are hard to come by and they're just specifically construction, but I can see five plus.
So it sounds, sounds like a satisfactory amount.
A good array, yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's an average response, talking to other districts and getting recommendations and other kind of, you know, firms that are interested. Five, five would be perfect.
Okay.
And so my, one of my last questions with the construction manager in making that decision on who to use, 'cause this is more so a consulting type of thing? Or is this someone that if we, to look at large projects, this is the company that does it? Is that right?
So this firm would strictly be for the upcoming large projects that the board and the community will decide. For any other projects such, you know, a great example of HVAC, this construction manager would not be involved. And it's more of, again, not really a consultant, but it's more of working with the architect and working with other vendors on the cost, the labor, logistics of it, and then reporting it back to the Board of Education about it. So they're overseeing the day-to-day, they're overseeing the cost of labor, they're overseeing that where the architect really defines this, you know, the work and the layout.
Any other questions or comments? We're gonna move along to our Sunrise contract.
So I wanna first give a shout-out to the districts within the SASED cooperative. There have been several meetings at SASED going back and forth on looking at the current contract of Sunrise, which transports our special education students that are outplace or within the district, and we have a cooperative with other districts. So I wanna give a shout-out to those business managers on collaboratively working in the best interest of all districts. So we've been working with Sunrise for the past couple of years and last year, the district, you know, saw a 13% increase in Sunrise contract and largely because of the salary and pay that the company needs, you know, pay their drivers. This year, Sunrise proposed, you know, an eight, nine percent increase for next year, but with negotiations and the business managers, we came up with a reasonable five percent increase for next year and only a one-year extension. And this allows the districts to decide if we wanna extend it one more year because by school code, we can additional one more year, or you know what, we're gonna redo our scope and bid it out. 'Cause there were some language that the, the business managers, we did not, we tweaked based on old language in the contract that was never re, you know, revised. So it just really opened our eyes on what else can we get out there? So that, so doing a one-year extension at five percent was a, was an extremely beneficial compromise. So the Board of Education would approve this one-year extension at the next board meeting.
I appreciate you guys working together. I appreciate you guys negotiating after taking nearly a 20% increase and then a 10% increase back-to-back. That was a real challenge. So coming together as a group who all utilize it and, and talking to each other and learning from each other is hugely beneficial for a lot of small districts. We smash together over like a 900-mile radius with SASED. It's crazy. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think with the districts that worked in this negotiation, we have a good relationship where we, you know, meet at monthly meetings, so we are able to collaborate, collaborate and work together and kind of understand each other because our students are completely different than, for example, Lyle. But to have that understanding and that data, data to help all of our districts, not specifically just one district, was extremely beneficial.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the board will approve the one-year extension on April 9th.
There are no objections, so we'll move to the Westway contract.
So currently, the district uses Westway to transport the general education students of the district. We've been, we've been working with Westway for several years. In the board agenda are the previous percentage increases dating back to 2019, 2020. This current year, we saw a 9.9% increase in transportation. Again, it's because of the increase of drivers and recruiting drivers. The prior year, the district saw a 17% increase and then 21, 22 was a 4.5. So understanding the large increases and understanding that, you know, the district did help out Westway during the COVID months and year of paying those drivers, you know, we were able to negotiate a reasonable contract term. So Westway brought up an 8.5% increase, but looking back on the data and looking back on what the district has, you know, changed to benefit Westway, we were, you know, I was able to decrease those rates. Instead of a one-year contract, I would recommend locking in a two-year contract and then after the two-year contract, the board would, the district would have to bid out. And the rationale behind the two-year contract is because I was able to negotiate a 5.5% in year two and year one was a 6%. So if we were able to go out to bid after next year, we would significantly see more than a 5.5% raise in our, in our transportation costs. So at least this really helps the district financially of locking in the second year and then the third year going out to bid. And rearranging the price increases for having one-year lump sum of 6% and the second year 5.5, it decreased the burden on the district to prepare for the bid process.
Is this inclusive of, like, the additions we did this year, the bus tracking software and all that?
No, this is strictly the rates.
Okay.
And the board would approve this on April 9th.
I can appreciate that negotiation and coming, coming down, especially from that 22, 23 year. So I appreciate conferencing and negotiating with them. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it looks like a, to me, it looks like a home run, you know?
Much of a home run as it could be.
Exactly, exactly. You minimized the raise as much as you could.
Yeah, and it goes back to what I was, you know, talking about with collaborating with other districts, you know, having those surveys and sending out surveys to get a feel of what other transportation companies are charging, you know, looking at other company, Westway with other districts. It was a, you know, leverage on working with Westway on getting the best rates. But again, locking a two-year contract and having the first year 6% and 5.5 the second year, it loses the burden come year three when the district does have to go out to bid.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move to our discussion for clear.
So the district over the course of the several years have seen a large uptick of students attending the district that do not live in the district boundaries. Roughly, you know, per pupil expenditure for a student is roughly $30,000 currently. That's a, that's a large per pupil expenditure. So having students that do not live in our district boundaries, that attend school, attend Westmont schools, isn't due diligence for taxpayers who do attend the schools and do pay the fees. So there is a software that would allow the district to really analyze and question those families that do not live here that are attending the district. It dives into all the history of their addresses, utility bills, and just really question those individuals. You know, there is a three-year contract for that. Year one would roughly be $15,000, year two would be $16,000, and year three would be roughly $17,000. But looking at the per pupil of $30,000, you know, having this three-year cost would outweigh and also, you know, it would help taxpayers knowing that, you know, we are looking out for, taxpayers looking out for our students and, you know, decreasing the, the resources that we need to provide students that actually do not live in our district.
Are we pretty confident that the cost benefit's worth it? Like, we have that many kids, you think, who?
We do, we do have a handful of students that do attend the district that do not live in our district boundaries.
We believe.
We believe.
This would give us the evidence.
So we have nothing in place now besides you physically doing the work and looking?
Yeah, and home visits or looking at utility bills and Google searches, there really isn't a hard, here's the proof. You know, having those surveys and sending out surveys to get a feel of what other transportation companies are charging, you know, looking at other company, Westway with other districts. It was a, you know, leverage on working with Westway on getting the best rates. But again, locking a two-year contract and having the first year 6% and 5.5 the second year, it loses the burden come year three when the district does have to go out to bid.
Thank you.
We're going to move to our discussion for clear.
So the district over the course of the several years have seen a large uptick of students attending the district that do not live in the district boundaries. Roughly, you know, per pupil expenditure for a student is roughly $30,000 currently. That's a, that's a large per pupil expenditure. So having students that do not live in our district boundaries, that attend school, attend Westmont schools, isn't due diligence for taxpayers who do attend the schools and do pay the fees. So there is a software that would allow the district to really analyze and question those families that do not live here that are attending the district. It dives into all the history of their addresses, utility bills, and just really question those individuals. You know, there is a three-year contract for that. Year one would roughly be $15,000, year two would be $16,000, and year three would be roughly $17,000. But looking at the per pupil of $30,000, you know, having this three-year cost would outweigh. And also, you know, it would help taxpayers knowing that, you know, we are looking out for, taxpayers looking out for our students and, you know, decreasing the, the resources that we need to provide students that actually do not live in our district.
Are we pretty confident that the cost benefit is worth it? Like, we have that many kids, you think, who?
We do, we do have a handful of students that do attend the district that do not live in our district boundaries.
We believe.
We believe.
This would give us the evidence.
So we have nothing in place now besides you physically doing the work and looking?
Yeah, and home visits, or looking at utility bills and Google searches. There really isn't a hard, here's the proof, and this software would allow that.
Do we, do other school districts use this? Like, where did this come from?
So other districts do. Marker just recently added this software to their residency process. So it is getting increased with districts in the area, just because, you know, there are question marks of students attending the district that do not live there and just being responsible for taxpayers. So there is an increase of districts utilizing this software.
So it's a best practice for districts to do this.
Correct. And that, this would also eliminate, eliminate, you know, the registration process for current families. So basically, this software would generate a score of 100, and a threshold, let's say, 60 out of 100. Anything below that would flag it an alert of, let's dive into this family and this student a little bit more. Do they just move within the district and haven't updated the utility bills? Do they actually live in Neiberville and attending this district? Any family that's above the threshold, you know, they wouldn't have to go through the rigor of the residency process, which we currently do. So that would eliminate the work and time the parents spend on doing this. But again, it just questions, and, and just dives a little bit deeper, deeper on those families that we suspect that do not live in the district.
Does it eliminate some of our hourly work that needs to happen also? So like, potentially a savings there?
Yes and no. So, you know, with this, only new families and fam, yeah, only new families would do the residency aspect, where current families that are above that threshold wouldn't have to provide the residency information. But again, it's still work on diving into, you know, and time diving into the families and, and questioning those families. So it's a yes or no.
What about like the whole registration day, like?
Do they change it?
If I'm understanding you correctly, this could mean that that registration day is not like every family in the district needs to go to the high school on the same day?
Yes, so this would eliminate the in-person registration process. This would eliminate all families that provide affidavits and residency documents. This would eliminate that time.
Winning.
Yeah.
Winning at life, wonderful, amazing, pays for itself.
Right.
Some families reported they didn't like coming to our in-person.
It's a wonderful day.
Don't get me wrong.
It's a wonderful day, smack dab in the middle of summer.
But yes, I've, I've heard the complaints.
Question about the, I mean, I'm all for the process being easier and everything, but I guess my question is, since the proof is always provided on registration day with the utility bills and the, you know, other documentation, where has the question come in that, like, how did some of those families, like, essentially fall through the cracks? Or what is, like, flagging them? Since everybody has to adhere to the same process, like, what's flagging them to where they're, like, potentially?
So from what I've heard, at least the last couple of years that I've been here, it's more of, you know, students bringing it up to teachers, and then teachers reporting to admin, hey, Johnny said he doesn't live there, like, it just, that's kind of bringing the red flags. Or, you know, affidavits and lease one address and utility bills at a different address. So that brings up kind of alarms.
I've never questioned that.
So I know Jack can speak to previous years on if the district has denied individuals.
If they're not matching, I would have thought, on registration day.
I bet you in the last, I only know the last 12 years, but you could probably count on one hand the number of families that have been rejected.
So if it doesn't match?
And it's much more than one hand, the number of families that?
We are going to find out.
Okay.
We believe.
Because I've not thought all this time, like, you know, the documentation, that's a match.
I know, don't they have to get, like, if they're rental, like, affidavit statements that this address, but that the utilities can be, do you think that's a possibility where stuff came in?
So I, I, it's more of addresses not matching up. It's, you know, the address is really a business in Westmont. The utility bills, again, are the not, it's not in Westmont, but the lease is. A lot of affidavits, the individual don't, doesn't come into the district and sign the affidavit that, you know, this individual's living with me. So, you know, as years in the past, it was never really questioned that hard and streamlined, where this would eliminate some time for current families. This would, you know, provide that due diligence to taxpayers and provide the actual resources for our students in our community. You know, if the board is willing, I can go back to negotiate instead of a three-year. I can try to get a one-year or two-year to see how it is. But, you know, you know, my recommendation that this cost would outweigh kind of the, the time and the dollars and the, and also the financial responsibility of taxpayers.
I guess, though, to, to echo Whitney's question, like, before we spend $50,000 over three years, could we just say no to people who don't provide the right paperwork as of an initial, more reserved step, I guess?
What I can appreciate with this, I think there's human error, or, and you're taking, like, almost like a data dump that does it for a lot of our staff. That's, I don't know, it kind of consolidates the process, I think, a little bit better than what individual people and papers, or if someone's turning this in and emailing by students. So I, I think I can appreciate that. And you can speak to a little bit more of that. I'll, I'll stop there before I go to my next question.
Well, this process will give us evidence that we couldn't otherwise gather.
I was just going to say.
How much evidence do we need, yeah?
Well, not only that, I mean, if I'm, if I'm, if I understand correctly how this works, if you're going to say someone says they live in the districts, but it turns out that they don't, you would, you would need to go and find the proof through public records. You would have to do FOIA's, you would have to do, you would have to scan probably multiple municipal and private entity systems in order to find the records that prove the point that they don't actually live in the district. Is that correct?
That's, that's a lot of work that the district hasn't done in the past, where, you know, it's just been, we'll cross-reference on Google Maps, we'll drive by the location, and if everything matches, it matches. But this software would.
This software aggregates all of that information.
It goes back to all the addresses this individual's lived in. It cross-references, the utility bills are actually in their name, actually being sent to this address.
So the handful of kids might go up? Like, the ones that you said, Jack, in 12 years, maybe a handful, we've actually said.
We can monitor, we, we can do a report next September and let you know what the findings were. As Carlos has said, this will, it'll gather evidence that would be next to very difficult for us to be able to.
I think that, I think that the, I, my response to Whitney, to your comment and, and yours is, the burden of the proof, you, you're saying that can't we just make it a higher burden of proof on, on the people that are registering? That's what I'm hearing you say.
Right, and I thought that it was already there.
You can make that burden as high as you want. The burden of proof actually lies on the administration. This is the issue at hand here. The burden, someone can come in and say, this is my, this is my proof. And if, if that is a lie, if that's fabricated, if it's false, if it's old, if it's doctored, now the burden of proof shifts to the administration to just to say, no, this isn't right, this is inaccurate. And they can't just say, because they think it. They have to go and find the actual information and prove it. And I think the point is that this system.
I mean, it's going to detect that, and I, I get that.
It's not just detecting it, it's going to provide you with the proof you need to show. Because otherwise, you have nothing, you have no case.
But it's providing proof for everyone in the district, not just the people we got to say no. It's going to be like, hey, I've been living here 15 years, and we are still living there.
I mean, I was in a neighboring district here that actually utilized this, like, some years ago. So I'm familiar with it, and it does eliminate having to go up to the school. I mean, everything could be done virtually, you know, and, I mean, in a matter of minutes. It's like, okay, check, check, approved, and you're done. So I get that part, but I guess my question is, is that even prior, and I'm not saying, you know, this is not a good idea, but just primarily because everything was done in person, if things just didn't buy visually, didn't match up, why wasn't it, you know, essentially?
I think some of that is hard, like, we are kind of taken for granted in that moment, like Carlos says. I, I think it's harder to put on that one person that sees, like, a lot of theirs is checking a box that you turn this in. It's not like scrutinizing a dollar bill and they're holding it up. And you turn in the A, B, and C, thank you, you checked, but then we need the verification part. So putting that, I don't think we can say, okay, just say on that day, the person that says, no, turn around, this doesn't look right. I think they do that by, by a point, like, people who don't, we, you know, this, this is the list. Did you turn in this and this list? And a lot of, I think there is a lot of that, too. That's where some of the work comes from, when they say, oh, yes, you didn't turn in the B document. You turned in A and C, but you didn't turn in B, and they help them or tell them where to go. But verifying that B document is not happening, you know, in reality, it's not happening.
They're skipping that part of the line.
And it's hard to do that that day.
It's a cumbersome registration process, for sure. And I think that Whitney and I are maybe just like a little surprised, we thought it was.
That I thought it was already happening.
And it's not, that's okay, so we need some support with that.
To say to a person, I think it's easier in what we do, it's like, yes, you turned it in.
Right.
But just, I think it's harder to verify, has this been doctored, or has this been changed? They're not doing that that day, you can't expect that.
Well, like I said, I thought just the other aspect, like Jess just said, and I can appreciate it. Like I said, I adhere to a district that did utilize, you know, a program like that. I guess it was just, like you said, not so much like scrutinize, like you said, holding it up and like, okay, has this been altered? But more so just like, if it says Westmont on one document and then Clarity Hills on another, you know, like you said, it's kind of hard to say, okay, does it conform in the Clarity Hills boundary? I get that part, but I think it's just like, if you see Westmont on one document and then Darien on another, it's like, wait a minute, like, why wasn't that, you know, like, addressed at that time?
But the whys of why it wasn't happening previously, to be very honest, it has been recognized that it wasn't happening well enough, period. Why? I don't think we need to go into, because it's just being recognizing that it wasn't happening the way that we need it to happen, and that this system can help us with that and help. And from a cost perspective, right, $15,000 in the first year.
You catch two students and it's already, you catch.
If, if one student.
Right, and we've already paid for it.
Per people cost is 30 grand, that's one student. That doesn't even account for the labor cost on the day of registration, for all the staff that is there on the day of registration. It doesn't account for the labor cost that anybody was doing in whatever verification was happening, which was not the entirety, right? It doesn't account, this pays for itself.
No, I get that part, like I said, I think it was just more so understanding, like, like Jess said, just getting that additional support on the scope of, again, not saying against it. Just getting that, understanding of the scope of, like you said, and that essentially adds up. It wasn't done, I'm not per se trying to dig into the why it wasn't done. I mean, that's the past, it's over with. But just more so, essentially, if it's going to be utilized, you know, just ensuring that, you know, anything that was done previously, we know this is going to rectify it, which, I mean, that's just, it's there, that's the common sense part, so.
I, I think it would help, and I would ask, because it's, I think it's hard to say, like, I have a question in the past, like, how much, how many are we catching? I think that was a question now, like, what happens, what happened before when we questioned one student in verification? But I think we will get better data, something we've been talking about all year, that we can.
Track better.
Better track, too, with this system. But I, I guess I'm looking forward to, I don't know if you'll speak to it at our next meeting, is, I know we had, like, we heard that Marker is starting to use it. I just want to hear more of a district that is using it and that data from them. If there's anything anecdotal, like, yes, we've used this for two years, and this is an example of where there was an issue, or we found five students that saved us this, I don't know if they can handle, like, give that data to us.
Yeah, I can reach out to.
Like, they can say successfully, work is easy to use. Because then my next question is, once this program identifies, it still puts it back on a district to visit the house or, so we still have to do that work anyway.
No, the program brings the evidence, the district has to then.
That's what I'm saying.
Have to utilize the evidence, but they don't have to gather more.
We still have work to do, once we get that flag.
But not of gathering more evidence.
Right.
No, but like she said, it's actually follow-up.
Once the evidence is presented.
Kind of verifying.
Where we have to state that, that doesn't take away all the work from the district, but they, it's really just flagging.
It just minimizes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we still have to do that work afterwards to say, this flag, because it may be something like, oh, they made a mistake and whatever, and they're not, you know, abusing the system. So we still have to do that work and then.
Yeah.
We can do it, we can do it, you're absolutely right, is we can do it more effectively because we walk in with evidence.
Yeah.
So you just verify?
Yeah.
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 And I, what I'll do is I'll reach out to districts, I mean, Marker just started it, but 58 has been using it, so I can reach out to them and get that data of, like, what works, what doesn't work? How many, what's the data, how much, you know, students did you catch? Not catch, but kind of questioned. So I'll, I'll go that. And then I can also reach out to see if we can decrease that, you know, the cost, or eliminate a year and just, you know, a year one, year two, because this is new, you know, it, you know, our district is different than other districts, so I can go back and kind of negotiate the price or decrease the terms.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Take that same energy and go into contract for internet service and.
So currently, the district has a five-year contract with Comcast. But after negotiating with Comcast, Nadine thought it was financially beneficial to do a three-year renewal with Comcast compared to the five. The rationale behind it is because, you know, we would be locked in at these high rates for next five years, where rates are decreasing over the course of the year. So being locked in for three years, that doesn't, you know, bind the district for an additional two years when rates are already decreasing. So that, that was the rationale between the three-year and five-year contract. That currently, we, the district pays $4,430 per month, where this three-year contract renewal would be $3,971 per month. So there is a decrease in cost of what we currently spend.
Yay, winning.
And it's even, it looks like it's a better service even than what we currently have.
It is.
So really winning.
What do we currently have?
Yeah, double yay, right?
Yeah. We currently use Comcast, it's just updating kind of what, what they're providing, and, and it's cheaper rates. And, you know, talking to Nadine, financially, again, it does make sense, looking at the data of decreasing rates. You know, the district, you know, we wouldn't want to be binded to five-year rates. Or five-year with rates decreasing.
Yay, gigabyte.
Unlike so many things, I feel like the internet is something that, like, gets more affordable and better every year.
There's your speeds.
Yeah.
And televisions.
Television, yes, right.
All right. We'll continue on with the wireless system refresh.
So at Miller and at the junior high, the wireless network isn't as strong, which puts a burden on students and staff. So this upgrade and refresh would allow more connectivity to help the students and staff at both Miller and, and the junior high. So, you know, the district does get reimbursed roughly 50% from E-rate. So the cost of this would be reimbursed from the federal government, government to the district. Roughly, it would be a five-year subscription for $40,000. And this was budgeted for the next couple of years. But again, the district does get reimbursed from the government. So this is just an upgrade and refresh.
$40,000 is actually 20?
Correct.
Or, okay.
Over five years.
Over five years.
And like you said, it was budgeted already.
This is, this has been a, yes, this is, this has been a yearly, you know, we were all, this, our contracts were renewed, and it's just extending it with a upgrade and refresh. Which is highly, which is recommended at Miller and at the junior high.
And these are, these two things will be approved today?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move to our last discussion item, presentation of monthly financial statements for February 2024.
So on the revenue side, through February 2024, the district has received roughly 51% of the budgeted revenue in the local source, roughly 80% of budgeted revenue in the state source, and 77% budgeted in the federal source of revenue. These are. These are um, slightly better than projected, um, which is a a good indicator that the revenue is um, better than expected as trends from prior years. Um, on the expenditure side, the district has spent roughly 55% of the total budget instead of salary benefits. Um, roughly 84% of purchased services and um, roughly 94% of the budgeted and supplies of materials. With supplies and materials, um, spending across the district has stopped for the remainder of the year, except for grant spending. So, you know, th- that was a significant, uh, we were under the 100% budgeted of the supplies and materials by roughly 6%. Um, so going forward for the remainder of the year, um, the buildings are only using supplies and materials that are grant-funded. Um, that's that annual process the district and other districts do of cutting off expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, so the district, uh, we have been doing it for for several years. So um, we just up the month that the deadline was, which was March 1st. So again, going forward, um, it's only grant spending for the supplies and materials. Um, looking at the projection of end of the year, end of the year fiscal balance, the district is projecting a surplus of roughly $10,000. Um, that is a conservative conservative uh, estimate of a surplus. Um, that's in taking consideration, um, the levy, which is projected at a 5% return. This projection um, is conservative at a 4.5%. So again, this is just conservatives, but this is also taking consideration, you know, spending has not, you know, stopped and and all the other factors, looking at prior five years. Um, so again, the district is projecting a surplus um, for the end of this fiscal year. Any questions?
No questions or comments? We'll move right along to our action items. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 audit as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There are no questions, roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the NIIIPC joint agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to play, pay any bills received in March 2024 that have been budgeted for the 2024 fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Motion carries. And so before I read this next motion, I just have something on behalf of the board to state about um, these next action items. Um, each year at this time, the board is presented with motions to dismiss employees. The board takes action on these dismissals based on the advice and recommendation from the district administration. A great deal of consideration and planning goes into each and every decision made regarding an employee's contract renewal. So with that being said, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing dismissal of first-year probationary teacher Cynthia Arnold for reasons other than reduction enforced as presented.
So moved.
Second.
If there are no questions, we'll go to roll call.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the continued employment of non-tenure teachers and tenure, tenure recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
The chair entertained a motion to approve that 36-month contract in amount of 140,000, no, 142,956 dollars with Comcast for implementation during the 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, um, finally, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the wireless system refresh as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Decady?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, I'll keep my comments brief, but we're heading into the last couple of days before spring break. And everybody, staff, our teachers, our students that worked extremely hard this year. And when we come back from a well-deserved break, we head into the final quarter of the school year and testing season. And I just, you win the championship in the fourth quarter, right? So everybody who will listen, we need outstanding attendance in the fourth quarter. We're on track to have great attendance this year, some really solid attendance numbers. But kids can't really learn at peak effectiveness unless they're here. So to our parents and our students, we need you here in that fourth quarter in strong attendance. And just keep working hard and good things will happen. But we will head into the final quarter and into testing season that we are well-prepared for coming up in the fourth quarter.
Any questions or comments for Jack? I think we go to board reports.
Um, I'll start, and I usually don't. I I just wanna give a shout out to Westmont High School Band Choir and Art, Mr. Erlab, um, Mrs. Beeterman, Ms. Jacobs, uh, the parent chaperone. Um, I heard nothing but great things about this Disney trip. Um, the workshop I heard was great, my son really enjoyed it. Um, of course, he enjoyed his time at Disney, and he loved it. Um, just rave reports, um, pictures that they shared on the app were were great. Um, I just wanna really thank them, um, great trip, so. We, you know, made lifetime memories for a lot of kids, so.
Awesome.
So it's very special.
Just wanna give a shout out to Mr. Troyer at the junior high. Swing choir just went into competition and my daughter came home with her medal the other day, they placed division one. So always the good things going on with extracurriculars over at the junior high.
Anyone else?
It's like, it's, it's, we're actually in a quiet moment for things going on around this.
Is it?
I feel like it's a little bit quiet.
Yeah, bite your tongue.
Don't you talk.
Um, I was just asking, asking about the five essential surveys. Um, and I was informed, there's still time to complete that, but we have met our goals, I guess, for response?
For teachers and students, absolutely, and we have met the threshold for parents. But we would still love to hear from more parents. The deadline is March 29th.
Cool. So a little time during spring break, little survey action.
It says the mark, I'm sorry, just to be clear, it says that the survey will close on March 31st. Is that right or is that wrong?
I saw the 29th, we could look it up.
Is that maybe like a weekday? That's why it's listed that way? Yeah, I'll bet you, I'll bet you.
Close the business day.
Well, just keep it at 29, just in case.
29.
It'd be confusing.
No, it's okay, it's a great question. What does it say from?
ISB says March 29th.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Just clarifying.
So we'll continue with future meetings and events. Um, the district fine arts night is tomorrow, March 20th at 7:00 PM at Westmont High School. Spring break starts March 25th through April 1st. There's an elementary PTO night, April 2nd, 6:00 PM at Manning. Um, there's a, um, one special meeting for the Board of Education, a workshop um, for the board on April 2nd, um, 5:30 PM. And then we have preschool screening, um, April 5th at South School. Parents should uh, call South School for an appointment. B-PAC International Night, which is always wonderful, um, April 5th, 6:00 PM at Westmont High School. And then our next CUSD 201 board meet, meeting is April 9th, 6:00 PM here at Village Hall.
Quick question, where is the um, the workshop?
South, South School.
Thank you.
And if there are no other questions or comments, the chair will entertain a motion to end, I'm sorry, if there's no closed session, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the March 19th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.